That's the, uh...
Could I like to call this board back from closed session? Could I have a motion to return to open session from closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we come back from closed session.
I have a motion, and do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second, any discussion? No discussion, then I'll take a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Next on the agenda...
Got to do certification.
Do what?
Certification.
Got to do certification.
Certify.
I close it.
Oh. Okay, we need to have a certification that everything we discussed in closed session was legal.
I make that motion that we, uh... Is that the appropriate way to do it?
I would read the certification.
Yeah, make a motion we agree for the certification. Make a motion whereas the Carroll County Board of Supervisors convened a closed session the date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and on the motion to close the meeting in accordance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. Whereas Section 2.2, 3711, Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board of Supervisors that each closed session was conducted with conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Carroll County Board of Supervisors hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed session to which this certification applies. And only such business matters as were identified in the motion of which a closed session was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting to which this certification applies.
Have a motion on the floor to have a second?
A second.
Have a second, any discussion? I'll take a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCall?
So certify.
Mr. Hill?
So certify.
So certify.
And I so certify. Okay. Next on the agenda is citizens' time. Thank you. Okay, I have one citizen that's signed up to speak on citizens' time, Donna Perry.
Well, I have the talking points on my iPad and I can't get it to load up. But anyway, I'm Donna Perry and I'm from Laurel Fork District and I appreciate the time to speak. I have a whole lot to say and I know I don't have a whole lot of time to say it in. First of all, I'd just like to say that it's been a lot of controversy about you all closing down the trailer at the rec. department and I personally applaud you for doing it. I think part of our problem in the county, it's not so much a, uh... We have a lot of problems, let's go with that. And I really don't envy the position that you found yourselves in. My dad used to always tell me if you watch your pennies, the dollars will watch themselves. To me pennies are those little brown things, but the pennies to y'all were much, much greater. I personally, and I don't even know the details of what that cost to keep that building open over there, I personally can see a couple thousand dollar savings in the wintertime by just closing it down. Those might be pennies to y'all. And I think that's a good start, but I think that you need to do that throughout the county and you need to be looking at every department in the county and see just exactly where our waste is because I think the county as far as an employer has run amok for many years and a lot of people have forgotten who signs the paychecks and who pays the paychecks and that's the taxpayers that do that along with other revenue from the state and federal government and probably many other sources that I'm not aware of. One thing that I have heard as far as the county goes is that there seems to be a lot of overtime and comp time and I guess it's my understanding that there really isn't a clocking in and out system. Salary or not salary, I don't see that it matters. I think that there probably are a lot of good employees in the county, but I think that as individuals, we are inclined to do what's best for our personal economies, not necessarily what's best for our employer, which in this case happens to be me. I would request that the Board of Supervisors look into some type of system to monitor the comings and goings of employees, not only from a money standpoint, but from a liability standpoint. If we have employees who are out of the building and get in an accident, is that an us problem or is that a them problem? Because if they weren't on the job, if they were at H&R Block getting their taxes done, they weren't on the clock. So there's just a lot of things in that regard that I think that the Board of Supervisors should look at. On back taxes, I had a, something that just came into my brain, I saw where classic creations had been taken over now by Blue Ridge Design. All of these things are LLCs and I do taxes in the off-season and I know there's a lot of hiding can go in on in behind LLCs and I'm not sure there's anything you can do about that. But one thing I noticed that I thought was real interesting, if the county's GIS online thing is accurate, that facility changed hands in April of 2018 and there were back taxes on it. Did whoever took that over, did they get clear title to that building? Can I speak a little longer?
Make it brief, please.
Okay. Did they get clear title to that and if they did, is that what happens out here in the real world if I buy a house and there's back taxes on it? Do I get clear title to it? You know, that was one thing that I wondered about. The other thing that really, really concerns me and I've heard a lot of people talk about it is the EMS situation. In this day and age, there is no excuse for anybody in any socioeconomic level to not have a payer source for health insurance. Not only do we have Medicaid for low-income working people plus disabled people, we have Medicare for the elderly and disabled, we have FAMAS for working people with children, we have employer insurance, and we also have the Affordable Care Act or Obamacare. So there's no excuse for anyone to not have a payer source. But what I see as the problem is that other, that's a personal, that's personal responsibility to our citizens and we've got to get away from just saying we're a poor county. We may be a poor county as compared to other counties, but that's a personal responsibility and when those people are not charged and are not billed for their services, it hurts me and I'm getting older and I have an even older husband and there's a lot of other county residents that are even older than me in Dougspur and Laurel Fork. And I think that it's time that the county starts billing for those services and hard billing for those services. If people are calling EMS and then refusing care, there should be a bill. We can stop that stuff. This is not a me problem or a you problem, that's a them problem. That's a them problem and it's time that the Board of Supervisors steps up and treats people equally, you know, because it's not fair for me to be denied essential services because somebody else is not doing what they should be doing. And I guess, you know, like I said, I have a lot more to say, but I'll stop.
Okay, thank you. Okay, that's the only person we had to sign up for citizens' time? So next, the item on the agenda is Robinson Farmer Cox, Mr. Gordon Jones.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Dalton. It's good to be with you all this, again. For those of you who may not know me, my name is Gordon Jones and I'm the partner in charge of the county's audit. First thing I want to do is start by talking about the reports that we issue as part of your financial statements. You should have this document that's about 125 pages or so. I'm going to talk about some reports that we put in your financial statements. On pages two and two through four, you have the independent auditor's report and it's on the, and again, this is in the larger document, not the one I just handed to you. On pages two through four, you have the independent auditor's report. It's a clean, unmodified report, can't do any better than that, no room for improvement there. The only odd thing about it this year is it talks about GASB statement number 88, which is certain disclosures related to debt, including direct borrowing and direct placements. The good thing about this pronouncement is that it didn't change how you report your financial statements, it just required us to put additional disclosures in the notes to the financial statements. The next report that we issue as part of your financial statements is on pages 121 and 122. This is the report on internal control and on compliance. It's also referred to as the Government Auditing Standards Report or Yellow Book Report. It's a clean report, no deficiencies or weaknesses are reported in this report, no compliance issues as well. The last reports on pages 123 and 124, this is the report on Uniform Guidance, it's also referred to as the Single Audit Report. It's required when you expend more than $750,000 federal funds, that's a clean and modified report. So all three reports are clean, no weaknesses, deficiencies reported. Have any questions on those three reports? If not, I'm going to move to the handout that I just provided you with, the smaller document. This document allows us to talk about things that, you know, you can't do in the financial statements. Allows us to talk about multiple years and it also provides other documents that aren't in the financial statements. On page two of that document, you have a balance sheet. The county's books are presented on two different bases of accounting. The one on the top is the full accrual basis of accounting. It's more of a long-term perspective, includes all your long-term assets, includes all your long-term debt. The most important part of that is the net position about a third of the way down the page. Now looking at the 2019 column, your net position for the county is $34.3 million. And I just realized I forgot my glasses, so this might be interesting. It's important to note that you all have positive balances in each one of those three categories, restricted, unrestricted, and net investment and capital assets. A lot of the other localities are adding debts to their books, just like you all are, but a lot of those numbers are going negative, so it's good that you're able to present positive numbers for that net position. Down at the bottom, you have the modified accrual basis of accounting. This is a short-term perspective. This does not include your fixed assets, your long-term debts. It's more of a short-term perspective. The most important there is part of that exhibit are fund balances, which is almost always at the bottom of the page. Total fund balances are about 9.6 million for the county, unassigned fund balance at about 8.9. We're often asked how much fund balance is enough reserve and we usually say about 15%, maybe 20%, somewhere in that range. We calculate that on the total governmental expenditures, including the school board's expenditures, which is about 76.9 million. So the fund balance as a percentage of that number currently, or as of June 30th, was about 13%. Unassigned fund balance was about 12%. Any questions about that? Over on page three, you have a summary for five fiscal years of the general fund. The general fund is the main operating fund for the county. It's important to know how well or how poorly the general fund did. Holds most of your reserves. In the column all the way to the right, the green highlighted numbers represent the annual growth over that five-year period. Total general fund revenues about 43.3 million, increasing at about 2.96, just under 3%. Most of that's driven by the property taxes increasing at about 3%. Your total expenditures of about 42.9 million, increasing at less than that at 2.3%. A couple of things that I'll point out there, health and welfare increasing at about 10% per year, that's social services and CSA. Debt service increasing at about 2.5% per year. Fund balance for the general fund increased at about, increased for $697,000. Started off with 8.9, ended up with 9.6 million. You can see that over that five-year period, your fund balances decreased from about $12.5 million. Good part is, is that you, you know, you increased fund balance by $697,000, which is a large improvement over the past five years. Cash balance at June 30th was about $6.2 million. And again, we do that same calculation down at the bottom where we calculate the fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures, including the school board, and you're about 12.5%. Cash balance at about 8.1%. And what I usually point out here is that $1.2 million of your fund balance is an amount due from the schools, which is unlikely to be paid to the county. So if you exclude that from fund balance, your fund balance percentage is about 11%. Any questions about that? The other thing that I was going to note was that intergovernmental revenue near the top of the page increasing at about 6%. A lot of that social services and CSA funds are funded by state and federal funds, so as those funds increase, the state and federal is going to increase. So that's what accounts for a lot of that intergovernmental increase. Intergovernmental revenue, state and federal funds, this year you had about $11.1 million, increasing at about 6%. The difference in those two is what the county funds for social services and CSA. Any questions about that? Over on page four, I provided you with a pie chart for general fund revenues comparing 2015 to 2019. You can see that property taxes in 2015 made up 49% of total revenues for the general fund, it's the same number for 2019. Intergovernmental increase from 23% up to 26%. Again, a lot of that increase is due to the increase in social services and CSA expenditures. Over on page five, same thing, but this, these are the expenditures for the general fund. The things that I've noted on this is that education expenses, and that's the transfer to the school board, decreased by three percentage points from 29 down to 26. Public safety, which includes sheriff, the jail, increased by three percentage points over 2015. And then health and welfare, which is mostly made up of social services and CSA, increased five percentage points over that five-year period. Any questions so far? Over on page six, you have the same information, it's just in a bar graph. Your less important general revenues are on top, your major revenues are on the bottom. Property taxes, you can see increase, increasing over that five-year period, mostly due to rate increases. Intergovernmental on the right there increasing, mostly due to social services. Over on page seven, you have expenditures, same type of presentation. Major expenditure there is education and that remains relatively level over the five-year period, ranging between 11 and 12 million dollars. That's the amount that the county gives to the school board. Public safety, as we see for all localities, increasing over that five-year period. And health and welfare there in the center, increasing quite a bit there. Over on page eight, provided you with a debt summary. This is long-term debt, long-term debt of the county, long-term debt of the school board. It does not include long-term debt, PSA or the IDA. For 2019, the county's long-term debt was down to $34 million. That's down from $51 million in 2014. You all are paying pretty large amounts on your debt service, which is good, hard on the budget, but good from a finance standpoint. School board obligations, school board obligations consist of OPAP obligations, net pension liabilities, and some compensated absences, about 42 million. These debts aren't interest-bearing debts, they're debts that will be paid over the lifetime of employees' employment and their retirement. So long-term debt total is about 76 million and again, not including the PSA, not including the IDA. Population as presented in the APA's Comparative Cost Report, about 29, 202, 29,212. That debt per capita is about 2610. The state average from 2018 was about 5807. If you include the PSA debt per capita, the county's debt per capita is about 4177. So it's less than the state average of 5807. And again, you all are paying pretty large amounts of principal and interest related to your interest obligations. So for 2019, you made about $4.5 million in debt service, that's 10.5% of your total operating expenditures. We typically like to see that about 5%, so that's a little high. Any questions about the total debt? Over on pages nine, 10, and 11, you have our letter to you, those charged with governance required by auditing standards at the end of the engagement. Nothing negative reported in this letter. On pages 12 and 13, we had a few management comments. Management comments are items that we didn't feel rose to the level of finding or weakness that were required to report in the financial statements, but there are operational issues that we felt were important enough to make management aware of those items. I won't go over all of them, but I would like to explain the fund balance comment there. If you'll notice there, I tried to calculate the fund balance based on your fund balance policy. And that fund balance policy states that your fund balance is supposed to be at 12% based on the cash provided by the treasurer in July following the fiscal year. So that 7.9% may not agree to what I've told you before, but again, that's cash basis balance, not fund balance. But your fund balance policy states you're supposed to keep 12%, 12% of the combined budget for the school board and the county. As of June 30th or into July, that was 7.9%. Any questions about that? And if you have any questions as you read through these management comments, don't want to ask me now, you're welcome to contact me. You have my contact information on the front of the presentation. Or you're welcome to ask me. On the last few pages, 14 through 21 or so, there are some upcoming GASB pronouncements. GASB is Governmental Accounting Standards Board. That's the organization that tells you how you're supposed to report and what you're supposed to report in your financial statements. For 2020, which is the fiscal year we're currently in, you have GASB statement number 84, which is fiduciary activities. I don't think this one will affect the county that much, but it will the school board and will require them to pull in their school activity funds into their financial statements so that they can be included in the comprehensive annual report. Over on the next page, GASB number 87 will be the big one that will affect the county. It's on page 15. This will require some changes. Currently, you count for operating leases, just as note disclosure, but once this one goes into effect, which will be fiscal year '21, not this year, but the next year, you'll have to report those as a liability as well and they will be offset by an asset, an intangible asset right to use, whatever asset you're leasing. So to the extent you can get rid of leases, I would get rid of operating leases, it is. That concludes my remarks. If you have any questions, try to answer them.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Can you make a comment as most of the general property taxes, the increase shown in your audit were a result of tax increases?
Without drilling down on it, I'd say a lot of it has to do with the rate increase that happened in, personal property was increased, I haven't written down here, personal property was increased 2016 and in real estate was increased 3.5% in 2018, or 3.5 cents in 2018. It could be a combination of delinquent tax collections and the rate increases.
The policy is not part of your audit per se, but you mentioned there was $7.9 million of cash balance at the end of June and we had an operating budget of $74 million, which is, or 79 million, whichever, about $7.5 million a month. Of course, we only collect taxes once a year, most of our money comes in. If we're spending $7.5 million per month for the months of July, August, and September and October for the December taxes come in, would twice-a-year tax collections help that cash flow so that we weren't faced with not paying our bills and all this other stuff at the end of the year?
Certainly would. Yeah, and it would also, would also help your fund balance, would help your reserves because in the year that you went to half-year collections, you would have the full-year collections in December and you would... collections in December, and you would turn around in June and have a half-year collection. So, your fund balance would immediately take up whatever hit increase by half of the real estate levy, real estate and probably public service corporation.
So, half of the 14 million dollar levy on real estate, that was on, that would be the only thing in your experience that would be collected at the midterm?
I would keep it that way. I wouldn't, some people collect personal property halfway through the year. I would not do it. It's a mess if you do it, in my opinion. I would keep it to real estate, and public service corporations assessments can be a little tricky, but that's, that's easily handled. The assessment for public service corporations don't come out until September or October, so you've already billed them for the first half.
So, currently, you're measuring us as of June 30th of each year, and our fund balance is less than what the board of supervisors personally set their fund balance at 12%. It's where 7.9 or whatever that number was. So, twice a year would help with that fund balance, maintain it. But would, our current low state of fund balance, would some kind of other method of either reducing debt or expenditures not be required to do that, in your opinion, I guess?
What, repeat the question? Sorry.
The, our fund balance is low now, according to our debt, our policy, about almost 5% below, 4%, 4.7%.
Based on the calculation of the fund balance policy, yes.
My question with the change, if we went to taxation twice a year, would that have to be coupled with cutting expenditures or continuing raising taxes to get, in your opinion, back to the required fund balance policy?
That's a loaded question, but I would say, I don't think it would. I think the one-time hit of an increase of 7 million dollars would get you to that fund balance amount. Of course, that doesn't take into consideration items you all may need to purchase that you've put off. You may have capital needs that need to be purchased, so, you know, that could take you back in the other direction. So, it's kind of a loaded question, and...
I understood when I asked. Because capital expenses is something this board has put off for a long period of time. Fleet of vehicles and other things have dilapidated to the point that there had, and school buses and other things, that we need to address. So, based off your comment, putting words in your mouth, Mr. Jones, that if we have other items like that, they need to be accounted, especially on the capital side within the budget itself. Since you're a multi-county auditor, are these expenditures on your pie chart showing dramatic increases, especially in the health and welfare and items, are you seeing that sort of a trend in Virginia?
I, I think, I think that is a trend, especially public safety. Public safety is increasing, similar to the way Carroll County is. I wouldn't say that health and welfare is increasing the way it did for Carroll County this year or over the past five years. I tried to drill down on those expenses directly because there's such a large increase over that five-year period, about a 10% per year increase, if you look at that schedule. And it's, it's all related to social services and CSA. CSA is Comprehensive Services Act.
One last comment on the social services budget. You indicated in your comments that they overspent by $87,000. How, how could we go about making sure that doesn't happen in the future?
I think a lot of the social services departments, in my experience, believe that if they get an additional appropriation from, from the state, that doesn't require, they get an additional amount from the state that doesn't require an additional appropriation from the county, like there's no local portion, that they don't have to have that appropriated by the board, which is a mistake, in my opinion. Anything they spend has to be appropriated by the board. So, I think it's just an educational thing, making sure they're aware of the fact that they need to have that appropriated.
The reason I asked that, at a recent board meeting, we, the board supervisors here appropriated funds on the federal and state side that weren't required to be matched, so...
Okay.
So, that, that would be typical, that we somehow got additional money that didn't get appropriated.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds to me like they probably listened to my comment while we were here.
Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate your report.
You're welcome. And again, if you have any questions, you have my contact information on the front. Welcome to contact me anytime.
Mr. Jones, I did send my email today to see what a, their firm periodically does utility rate studies with people, and I've asked him to provide us a proposal on the utility rates scheduled by the public service authority so we can have that in the future.
Okay. Next order of business is Carroll County, I don't make, is that, that's just what he just did, IDA, that just did that. Okay, do I make them?
Mr. Jones, we need to accept your audit. Usually, there is a motion to accept it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept the audit that was presented?
Have a motion to accept the audit just presented to us. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Any discussion on it? I'll call for a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
To you?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Next order of business is a public hearing on budget adjustments. So, I'll open the public hearing at 6:37 PM. And I have several people that want to speak on the Carroll County budget amendments public hearing. First one is Teresa Isom.
Not sure that I want to speak now, but I am coming up anyway. As you guys know, I'm the Director of Department of Social Services. I know there has been a...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's my understanding there's been a proposal for a reduction in the Department of Social Services budget. I have provided you guys with a bunch of numbers, which, you know, social services is evidently full of quite a bit of those. So, I just kind of wanted to talk briefly about what a reduction of our budget could do, possibly do, because the amount of cases that our agency covers, and that's just not only foster care cases, which I'm sure the county is very aware of, because we're constantly trying to recruit for foster parents, but we also have program areas. It's not unusual for people not to understand what the Department of Social Services does unless you've had to go there for assistance or been in, you know, in, you know, for a case or something of that nature. But one of the main things I want you to look at is that every year, the state puts out a profile for each agency in the Commonwealth, and I printed off 2017 through 2019. And because of the, the local match rates that is required with the majority of programs through DSS, what the county gives to the department is given back much higher. For example, in 2017, the county gave into social services 1.3 million, and social services gave back into the community 58 million. And if you go to 2019, that amount increased from 2017. The amount of money the county put into social services was 468,000 more from 2017 to 2019, but social services put into the county 14 million more, meaning with Medicaid and food stamps and the benefit programs, the fuel, the energy assistance, it, it helps this county. It's what you would call the best bang for your buck. You get quite a lot more money back when you put in for social services. It keeps our places, our doctor's offices, running because they accept Medicaid. Food stamps help with our local grocery. A lot of our convenience stores take the food stamps. So, it puts a lot of money back into the county. Also, on the other side of it, is a cut in social services funding is very dangerous for a community. Our caseloads in foster care have gone from 50 to 87, that was the end of 2019, but we're at 92 right now, kids in foster care. And I've had three workers working those cases, which is around 90 children, an average of 90 children a month. Those 90 children have to be seen every month, does not matter where they're at. It's mandated. When it comes, everything has increased. I wrote down what our, our cases were for APS, adult protective services and child protective services. For adult protective services, I have two caseworkers that are working all those cases. That isn't even, that's only one part of what their caseload looks like, because they also do screenings for people that go into nursing homes and assisted living facilities. They also provide casework for companion, for people that go into homes and help, you know, the elderly with their, you know, cleaning of the house, anything that they can't do for themselves. And then there are CPS cases, which again, for the year 2019, I was fully staffed for one week. That one week, I knew that the person was leaving the next week because they had already given their notice. I've had two positions that the state gave because of our foster care numbers that have not been filled since July. Since I came on in 2016, I have, if someone has left, I hold the positions open as long as I can, that were safety and, and benefits are not risk, in order to do salary savings. So, cutting our budget is very hard, not only on the Department of Social Services, but also on the community that we serve. I don't know if that sparks any questions, comments. I just, we, since September, we diverted 25 children from coming into foster care. Mr. Hill sits on the community and policy management team, which is a funding source for a lot of our children in foster care. He sees the children that we're funding. He sees the cases that have to be, that we have to give funding to. Children's Services Act, CSA, is separate from the Department of Social Services. Though I am on both of those teams, I am, it's very different, and I know that becomes very blurred, but I'm here on behalf of the Department of Social Services. Next month, I'll probably be here for Children's Services Act, but that, it is a very different, and I know people are saying that social services has increased, but it's, a lot of the fundings is the 100% reimbursement, that is no local match, like the allotment that you guys signed off on last month, or last, the last meeting. That was 100% funded from the state and fed, no local match. And those are for our foster kids and our adoption kids. But it is, it's just, I know there's a concern about comp time. The public comment was very accurate, that, you know, comp time is, can get eaten up really quickly. However, for the Department of Social Services, I had a worker last week that was at a house for seven hours, trying to make a placement for three children, so they would not come into foster care. So, you would not have that foster care funding issue for seven hours. She sat at a house in the pouring rain, because they wouldn't let her in, to try to find a placement for a child. Well, those, and then two hours at the office waiting on the placement to come. Next day, she had to go out and make contact, because there's timeframes that they have to make contact on cases. A lot of them are 24 hours, especially if they're under the age of two. It is mandated that a worker goes out. So, if we receive a phone call at 4:30 on Friday, they have to see that child by 4:30 on Saturday to meet the mandate. That is after working hour. So, we are working on getting our comp time down, and hopefully, if we were ever actually fully staffed for extended periods of time, that would be the case. But at this point, we've got to make sure that the safety of the people that we're serving, along with meeting mandates. Don't really have anything else.
The amount of time that's put into diverting a case adversely affects what they do in the office with the rest of the jobs that they're, am I correct?
Yes, that is correct. I was going to be this, do this big dramatic show of, we have children that are currently in foster care that have three people that are touching their case in some way, shape, or form. The foster care worker, the person approving their Medicaid, making sure they're getting their health benefits and things of that nature. And then we have our CSA coordinator that has to make sure that whatever funding that the feds and the state doesn't cover is getting covered by the CSA. That's one child, times 90. We have children that have been in care for multiple years, that have folders that are longer than the way I could stretch my arms because of the amount of incident reports that occur, and their needs are very high. If a worker is out trying at a home, doing a home visit, trying to keep kids out of foster care, they're still going to have cases that come in, that get called in that day. For the past, since March, I've had two investigators to do all of these CPS cases that I've listed. That's not children, that's cases. So, we have children that, we have cases that have four, five, six, seven kids on it. They have to see all the children. It's mandated.
For instance, of the 92 kids that you, that you show in foster care, how many of them would a worker have to travel more than, say, two hours to go see? And I know that's tying you down to, but just roughly.
We have 17 in residential facility right now. So, those are all multiple hours away.
When you say residential facilities, you're meaning they have to travel to Virginia Beach?
Portsmouth, Kenbridge, Jarrett. Have you ever been to Jarrett? It's real out there in the woods, and you can't get there. So, and then we have, you know, Duffield, which is Lee Scott County. Um, so, and then we have, you know, Duffield, which is Lee Scott County area. So they go from one end of the state to the next.
And it has to be a worker from our office that sees that?
Yes. I hired contract workers because, for, um, a short period of time, who were trained DSS employees, who answered straight to me. So they sent everything through me and staffed all the cases in order to make sure that the children were seen, because there was no way that three people could see 92 children. There's only usually 20 working days in the month. Trying to keep comp numbers down. Can't send them on the weekends. But there is, you know, there are program areas where I am looking to try to cut back on what the spending is for, um, that don't have the mandated funding amounts that have to be. But $50,000, it will be a very hard, it will be an impossible thing for me to be able to do. Have any questions?
Any other questions, guys?
I know it's difficult, and I don't know that the folks out there understand what you have to deal with. I know, I've said on the board, I didn't know before I said on CMPT, I didn't, didn't realize the, the, how to say it?
Severity of the abuse and trauma that these children-
The severity of the issues that we're having to deal with, especially in that area. And that just, people would be appalled to hear what they have to deal with. I'll just leave it at that.
What's the youngest in foster care right now?
Five months.
Five months. Oldest?
We keep them till 21. We got like a few that are leaving out at 21. Um, we can keep them to 21 through fostering futures. So, um, we, uh, we've also had a very large increase of some really severe physical abuse cases of children. And when I say children, I don't mean like five-year-olds. I mean like five-week-olds. And making decisions based on whether or not they get to live. So it really isn't easy. And one of the, one of the pages I just really wanted you to look at is the life, family service specialist's starting salary, which is $30,828. I went through and did general, actually kind of low amounts of what a mortgage is, a water payment, sewer, gas, groceries, small car payment, low insurance, what a college loan. They have to have a college degree to be a family service specialist. College loans run about $250, $300 a month. That averaged out, or totaled out to $1,720 a month. I have a worker right now that brings home $1,720 a month. So she hasn't bought clothes for her kid. She hasn't bought a birthday present for her children. That's what she's living off of. So it's not like they're getting paid thousands and thousands of dollars. And we don't get paid when we take children into foster care. The county and the state and the federal government pays for the children in foster care for their basic needs to be met. The Department of Social Services in no way, shape, or form gets extra money because we take children into foster care. Hence why a worker stays at a house for seven hours in the pouring rain, so we don't bring three more in.
And e- even when they're adopted, it's not done then, we still have to subsidize them?
There's adoption subsidy, but that's 100% funded, outside of local.
And tell us how long it goes for? Once you get, you transfer a kid into foster care to, to be adopted, how long does it usually take?
They have 12 months. The parents have 12 months to get their, the situation remedied, fixed, before the child can come back. With that being said, in 2019, we had 14 children adopted. 2020, we've already had three in 20 that are in the process. Their parents' rights have been terminated, and they're in the process of being adopted.
That, that normally takes more than a year, though.
Oh, it, it, yes, they have up to a year. So, um, we have children that are currently in care, and we're still working with the parents, and it's 26 months.
Do they have some of them that may not be adopted? Is the majority of them that may not be adopted because of-
A child has the option at, um, at age 14 to determine if they want to be eligible for adoption. So if we remove them, um, and they do not want to be adopted, and the parents can't get them back because their rights have been terminated, then they don't have to be adopted. So they could be in foster care until age 18, or 21, if they're with fostering futures. So, there's a lot going on. Um, I know everybody's got a story, but these are our kids, and these are our old people, and they deserve everything that they can get, and we're making a case for it.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Ice.
Thank you.
Uh, next person on the public hearing is Doug Smith.
Evening, folks. Uh, gonna try to go through these quickly. Uh, I was so glad to see that Libby and Larry stepped up on the Recreation Department. I disagree with your earlier speaker, because to me, if I'm looking at bringing business here, I'm looking at taxes, rules, recreation, and other such. So I'm really glad they spoke up. Um, there are many who participate in the, all areas of recreation, all ages, who I never can get to come forward and come out and say anything about it. Uh, I appreciate that we are keeping some things running. Uh, you have one person who was really trained by Libby and has the ability to run the place. I hate that he's having to reapply, and we may be losing him because he schedules everything. He gets the people, uh, going, and I appreciate Woodlawn, uh, being open in the other areas. Um, I know what y'all are trying to do, and it hasn't crippled it yet, but, uh, I would love to see him given a permanent position so that he can keep going there. Um, another thing, and I'd say, these are all just rattled off. I hope others will be speaking their opinions. These are things that are, I'm speaking opinions. Coming after her, it's tough, because I worked with, uh, duly diagnosed persons for years as speech-language pathologists. I have worked in a field of, of developmental disabilities and other things. So, uh, it kinda gets to me to hear, you know, I understand where she's coming from. Uh, mine are petty compared to that, but that's one thing I do appreciate. Uh, if we could keep, uh, the Rec Department working well, uh, because I know I use it in a lot of other people. Uh, I'd like to also pose a question, because this has been asking me, who exactly was and is in charge of getting our businesses here in the past? Uh, and, you know, y'all can get in touch with me later, we talked about this some other time. Uh, seeking a, negotiating tax breaks, things like that. Uh, our business taxes do seem to be higher than some of them in the areas around us. Uh, and that bothers me, uh, real estate things. I was looking at some figures. Also, I'd actually heard from a reliable source that we lost the Cracker Barrel due to a past Carroll County treasurer who, uh, actually wanted too much money from that company, and the negotiations broke down, and we might have had that. And I do think it's a shame that Sheetz, uh, is, uh, where it is in Galax instead of out here at where we have that open spot, which might bring in other businesses. And also that the Cracker Barrel went to, to me, uh, I, I go there, I've been there, I like the food, but it's rough getting in and out where they've got it in Mount Airy. Usually Cracker Barrel locates near an interstate. I would love to see us get a truck stop, anything out that way. So whoever negotiates this stuff, please get with that person, and let's see if we can get some more businesses coming in here. Look at, what are real estate, what, what is it that's keeping them from going? Why are they going to, down to North Carolina, or Withville, or whatever? And you all probably have the answers to this, but these are just concerns that popped up. Uh, our personal property tax is among some of the lowest around here, I think, or in the lower areas. Uh, I was listening to the questions about those tax rates and everything. So, you know, I'll leave that to the report. That was excellent, um, report. And so, whatever y'all decide on that. Um, you all earlier promised that, uh, everybody would suffer on the budget cuts. We look at everybody, except the Judicial Department. And, you know, I may get in trouble for saying this, but I'd like them to be looked at, too. There's cars, there's tires, there's a lot of vehicles and such. And, uh, Sheriff Manning, uh, around high school time, when I was there, in fact, ran that department with far less, uh, deputies and such. I realize there is more danger, personal safety issues and such, but, uh, I think if you're gonna look at every department in the county, uh, that we do need to look, uh, at the Judicial Department as well. So just throw that out there. Um, and the very last thing I have, which I know will be good, and hopefully other people speak to their, their opinions and issues, is, uh, it's something that's bothered me in the past. Hillsville is the county seat. Why don't we merge Hillsville and Carroll County? Get rid of all these duplicate services, double taxation in Hillsville. I know they hate it. Hillsville's a very proud place. They, they've had that come up. In fact, I know in the seventies, it actually was brought up by, uh, my mother, who was castigated on the town council when she was actually on that, uh, for suggesting that they could, you know, merge and coordinate services and maybe save some money. There are other counties and cities doing that in the state of Virginia, uh, so you don't have so much duplication, so many of the departments. So, you know, I throw that idea out again, crazy as it may sound. Hillsville's gonna hate me for it, but, so I'm throwing it out there for you guys, and thank you. I know you all are working hard on the budget. I appreciate it. I read about it, and I, and, uh, again, thank you very much.
Okay. Next scheduled speaker is, uh, Philip Berry.
Good evening, gentlemen. Good to be here, and I know y'all have a tough job, and, uh, I'm here speaking on behalf of the, uh, Landsburg Community Center, and probably all community centers. And I know we're not essential services, and, but I think we do provide, uh, quality of life, and, uh, you know, that's good for Carroll County. And so I hope, and I, I wanna thank the boards for all the support you've given us since, uh, 2007, to all the, this board and all the previous boards. And, uh, when I came on board and, and the Board of Directors of the Community Center, uh, we started in 2007 after the, the properties, an old school building, and it had been given back to the community in 1998. And by 2007, the building was about to cave in, the roof was bad, the, the tiles in the, in the rooms was coming up, the, uh, the boiler didn't work, there was no heat, heating system, and, uh, the kitchen was antiquated, and the playground equipment was all obsolete. So we came in when it was a difficult time, and, and the board supervisors initially funded a, a new roof for us. They gave us, uh, $25,000, I think, and we, we raised, uh, $10,000. And since then, uh, they've given, uh, the board has given us, uh, has funded us monthly since then, up to today. And during that time, we have, uh, uh, we've been able to not only put on a new roof, we've repaired all the, all the rooms, all the floors, uh, uh, put in new doors that cost $6,700. Nothing's cheap nowadays. And, uh, we put heat in our end, probably cost us $40,000 or $50,000 over two or three year period. We've, uh, built, uh, playgrounds and re, redid, redid the, uh, the hardtop where the basketball and the tennis courts are. We built a, uh, walking trail and, uh, volleyball court, sand volleyball court. And so, uh, we've done a lot to improve the grounds and the, the building itself. And we have, uh, we've overcome many obstacles. And we now, we have a, um, jam station every Friday night. We're part of the crooked roads, and we have visitors that come from all over the United States. Uh, we've had people there from Rhode Island, Washington State, Wisconsin, West Virginia, Pennsylvania, and numerous other places. So the crooked road does attract tourists to southwest Virginia. Uh, 'cause you know, if they can find in Landsburg, they can find about any place in southwest Virginia, I guess. And, but they find us sometimes. And we have, uh, we have, um, cruise ends, uh, four to six every summer, and people use our facilities, uh, for reguins, birthdays, and all kinds of events. Of course, it's a voting precinct, and the county uses it for soccer, soccer games every spring, and people come from all over Carroll County. And so, um, I think we have a good thing going. I think all of the community centers in Carroll County are good for the county and the quality of life of our citizens. And so all this has, uh, enabled, enabled us to do a lot. Uh, your, your funding us, and we've continued to work. We have, uh, we have, uh, raised money for all the events, events I've talked about. So we didn't just quit working. We raised, uh, more than you give us every year. And that, all this has enabled us to, uh, to do right much, to do, to make this a, a good facility for southwest, uh, southern Carroll County, Canaan, Landsburg. And people come from all over the area. And, uh, I believe that we are an asset to the area and to the county, and, uh, and our Board of Directors always driven to be frugal and good steward of the county's money. I don't think we've been wasteful. I think we've done a good job. And if y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them. But, uh, I do think we have a good facility. I hope you'll keep funding us. If you have to cut some, maybe keep it as small as you can, and we appreciate all you've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Berry. Uh, next on the list is Maureen Mills.
Chair Webb, Supervisors, Administrators, I appreciate the opportunity to comment on the budget. Um, regarding the proposed cuts, it's hard to comment because the cuts are assigned broadly to agencies. For example, the Board of Supervisors, uh, is looking at $35,000, but it's unclear what that would be, because just your budget includes things like the Twin County Free Clinic, uh, Crossroads, Mount Rogers, Rooftop, Carroll Wellness. So it would be helpful for us to know where, where those cuts more granularly would be coming from. Um, and, and that's just one example. It's the, all the other agencies, too. Uh, it would be very helpful to know that. Um, what kind of oversight, too, will, will there be to measure outcomes, especially for the large cuts to education? I know it's the average daily membership, but boy, that's a, that's a big hit, especially when we're trying to motivate students and educators to come to school excited, to learn and to teach, with a commitment to keep our young people home, and maybe helping out on the social service end, because a lot of kids that are motivated to get to school may not be, um, having troubles, uh, like they are. I'd also like to just ask about the revenue side, please. Um, I, I, I don't, I don't know, and I'm sure there is a plan to, to collect delinquent taxes, uh, for those people who can afford to pay. Uh, in the first seven months of fiscal year 2020, just 19% of more than $3 million, uh, dollars that were due were collected. And just 8% of the one and a half million of delinquent personal property taxes have been collected, and then there's the two smaller tax areas. Uh, so I don't know, but I'd love to know. Um, do, do these balances include the taxes that were due in previous years, or could that be added on? I just don't know what that, uh, what that revenue would be, because it's important for us to be able to understand how the county focuses on revenue while you're doing the really, really hard work of, of focusing on cuts. Uh, and then finally, this is the third time I come before you to ask that you please provide emergency medical services to the Laurel Fork District and surrounding communities with response rates that are equal to the rest of the county. Uh, Laurel Fork has had no effective rescue squad for a long time, Doug's for even longer. Now, there is a fiscal year 2020, 1-9-0-2-0, line 35, and it's for recovered costs. And it projects that the county will have nearly one and a half million dollars in revenue from EMS runs. About 62 of this, 62% of this has already been collected the first seven months of the year. So that is a really good track record. Uh, these recovered costs, and I, I sort of put it out, just extrapolated it out onto a high end of saying $55,000 for one average FTE firefighter, EMT. It's probably high, but it's salary and benefits. So if you just use the recovery, recovered cost, that's about 25, 26 full-time positions. And I think that CCFR has about 24 full-time and maybe 15 part-time positions. So these are approximations to illustrate that there is revenue for fire and rescue services, and along with the taxes that we pay, we deserve equal services when we all call 911 from our end of the county. So to sum up, with respect, I ask you to tell us, please, what's happening on the revenue side, uh, such as tax recovery. And on the expense side, it would just be really helpful to see where the cuts will fall, and how outcomes will then be measured to see what, what the fallout, as we've just heard from Social Services might be, and I'm sure the other agencies feel the same way. And then please help us to- feel the same way. And then, please help us to get emergency services to Laurel Fork and our surrounding communities. And I appreciate your time. Thank you. Do you have questions Well, because I don't understand how, when we come and speak to you with questions or ideas or comments, how do we get follow-up on that?
Right. And I think I'm right here. Right now, we're in a public hearing, so we're...
Yes, sir.
I intend later on in the agenda to address a couple of things that you were asking questions about during my comment session.
Thank you very much. I look forward to that, and I appreciate all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Junior Bass.
Good evening.
Guess you all missed me. I hadn't been here for a while. Last time I was here was on that fiasco with water, and I might as well have stayed home that night. But anyway, as far as this public hearing goes, I almost missed... Almost missed tonight. Somebody called me and reminded me. If I recall right from what I read in the paper, the budget is a million or so short. Some... Some of it was... Income was underestimated, and they're overestimated, and the outcome was underestimated, or vice versa. Anyway, I should have read my article again. But my way of looking at it, a million dollars shouldn't be too hard to come up with from an overall budget of the... How many million-dollar budget we're talking about? The guy who spoke up here, I think he mentioned it, but I didn't get it. But I just think that you've got to make the adjustments. You all are the supervisors. You're in charge. You're the one that should have caught this thing before it got this far. You let... Well, you propose a cut, somebody pushes a little bit, and then you back up. And that's just the way it goes. And that's the way it's been for a good while. So, I might suggest one way of making up some of it that some of you that were here during the last supervisor session, they might want to contribute a little bit of their salary. Maybe all of it. It's your fault. Not the newer ones, but the other ones. It is your fault. You are the supervisors. You don't let these departments come in and tell you how much they've got to have. If the money's there, okay. If it's not, then you're the ones that has to tell them, here is what you get. This is it. You work with it. You make your budget, their budget, meet what you have to give them. And that's the same way when I get my social security check. I've got so much money there, and I know I can't spend more than what's there. And every year, they send me a little thing out from social security telling me how much I'm going to get for that year. So, I've got to work with that. So, I look at the supervisors to take charge and get this fixed. And I don't know, maybe I need to contribute a little more tax. If that's what it takes, well, that's what it takes. There's really... There's no reason for being here tonight with this on the agenda. So, that's all I have. I hope you'll get all out. I know you will. But it's... It's become a problem. It shouldn't have been a problem. Well, thank you all.
Thank you.
Can I say, hey, men, gentlemen?
You would like.
Can I answer your question? We spend a million dollars of a board action in Carroll County.
Okay, the next one on the public hearing is Roger Brooks. Mr. Brooks.
Good evening, gentlemen. Appreciate your time and letting me speak. I'm the Commonwealth attorney for Carroll County, and the budget for the Carroll County Commonwealth Attorney's Office was something that was brand-new to me come January 1, when I come into the office. And after I went through the budget with my secretary, and then went through some more training, and went through it again, I realized that 93% of my budget is state-dictated. 93%. I have $25,440 that comes from you folks that I have some control over. Now, the 93%, there's the funds that come from the state. There's the local funds that are required to cover the fringes, is the term that's generally used, fringe benefits, taxes, things of that nature, that the state will not pay, and locality has to pay, none of which I have control over. The $25,440 I have control over. Even my power bill, which I don't have a meter, I don't have any way to tell you how much power we're using. I can't turn the lights off and save. I can't leave everything on and cost. It's allocated based on a whole budget. Even that is dictated, and I have no control over that. The little piece that I do is the $25,440. You have made a request for a $5,000 reduction in my office, and I understand that. And as long as I'm being treated as everyone else in it, we will do the best we can to go forward and work with what is required to keep things going. But I do want you to understand, my office is understaffed by two positions. According to the comp board, we should have one more attorney and another clerical position. The state actually has funded one of those, but because we're of the view that the county's funds do not allow it, we actually have not filled that position. It actually brings a little extra revenue in to help cover some of our expenses by what's called vacancy savings. And I'm sure Mr. Dalton's well aware how that works, but that brings a little bit in to help us offset some of our expenses. The other position is approved, but not funded. A couple of things that I wanted to comment, and this isn't even in my baby wig, is the day reporting program. Mr. Lyons started that program, and if I read the budget correctly, there was $66,000, $67,000 allocated for that office. The last report I saw, it was saving the county over $100,000 a year in an offset of jail expenses. It cost us $25... Excuse me, $28.65 a day to keep someone in the regional jail. By going into the day reporting program, instead of going to jail, that program has saved the county money. It's in fact a profit center for the county. It is, in essence, putting money back in our pockets instead of sending it off to Dublin. And we all know, we send an awful lot of money to Dublin. The regional jails is a budget breaker for us. I am implementing changes in how we're going to address bond for new charges. Let's face it, our crime rate's up. Last year, the court's caseload for criminal cases was up 14% from the year before. We stay busy. We've got plenty of work to do, and there's more of it coming. There is a crime problem in Carroll County. My secretary keeps a binder that she puts lab analyses in as they come in, and it's about a two, two-and-a-half-inch-thick binder. And that used to take care of two years' worth of lab results every time there's a drug case. The drugs are sent to the state crime lab. Six to eight months later, they send us back a report and say, this is what it is, and we prosecute that case. That notebook, that two, two-and-a-half-inch-thick notebook, used to take care of two years. It now is lucky to do one. And that's not been that long since this change has come about. We do have a drug problem in Carroll County, and we're trying to find creative ways to try to avoid more cost to the county while taking care of those problems. And if somebody who's arrested today, do we recommend the judge just loan them right back out with their promise to not get in trouble anymore and come back to court, or do we require them to post a cash bond? And if the answer is that they can't afford to cash bond, Carroll County gets to pay to keep those folks at the rate of $25... $28.65 a day. The other thing that we should be hitting on is the state. The state's not paying its fair share. When someone is convicted, they become an inmate in the Department of Corrections after... I believe the correct number is 60 days. There's a statute, and DOC has used that to their advantage to wait 60 days before they claim them and start paying us their share. Their share's $4 a day. County's paying the remaining $25... Excuse me, $24.65 a day for those who don't go into DOC. Now, if they take them on and they send them to State Central, they send them to Powton, they send them to Independence, to River North, state pays full cost. We pay nothing. Why are they leaving that here? Because they're balancing their budget on Carroll County. Our delegates should be at this meeting. Our state senators should be at this meeting. I know they're in session, and I give them grace for that. But the reality is, they should be answering to us while they're allowing the state to balance Department of Corrections' budget on our backs, because they are. The last thing that I want to mention is the auditor made a comment that we've been paying down our debt at roughly twice the recommended rate from our auditor. Gentlemen, we have to think about how we spend our funds. I try to pay my bills as hard as I can. I've tried to pay down my mortgage every year more than the minimum payment. We've been doing that in Carroll County, but has that conduct of trying to be good stewards and trying to get that debt down to a level that we're a little more comfortable with put us in part in this financial situation? Has those extra payments, well-intended and well-considered, put us in part of where our budget's crunch is? I hope you'll think about that in making the decision. We'll do everything we can on our part to help. And my door's always open for suggestions from you folks on how we can do a better job of helping, particularly with the jail cost. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes everyone that signed up for the public hearing. So, I will close this public hearing at 7:20 PM. And...
Mr. Chairman, am I...
Yes, sir.
May I make a few comments that might help or worsen the case?
I rarely come up to the podium, but tonight, I'd like to... I've prepared a few statements. As I start off, it's well documented, much discussed throughout Carroll County that the board of supervisors need to be good fiscal stewards of the county's money. The plan presented to you tonight was formulated and discussed with the board of supervisors' budget committee and myself, and it has many recommendations on how to deal with reducing the current fiscal year budget. With only four months and a few days left in the fiscal year, it may well be impossible to accomplish what has been presented and then making the next fiscal year budget even more difficult. Budget cuts always affect people that you know, care for, and respect, sometimes in ways that we never intended. However, the board of supervisors are charged with the Code of Virginia to balance a budget. That is your duty. Some of the ideas I've heard personally is control spending, reduce taxes, living with their means like everyone else in the county, and we need to engage the public more in what is best for the county. I agree with all those statements. As a matter of fact, I agree with about everybody that made a statement today. There is some truth to everything everyone said, and I agree with those. But in the end, we must do what's the best in the short term and long term for this county, and that is balancing the budget, as the code requires. Almost everyone has a different opinion and thought process about what's important to this county, the state, the country, and the world. I know over time, my thought process has changed as I learn more and hear more. However, my strong belief is that a well-thought-out plan of how to bring this county out of fiscal stress is what we need and implement. And the board needs to understand that they are the ones that can implement this. No one else in this county, the board of supervisors, is charged with those duties. The board supervisors take the first step as we've discussed this and analyzed the fiscal problems we have. We all know the price of goods, utilities, services keep rising, and paychecks really don't seem to follow that trend. However, we are currently doing a financial forecast to see where we are in the long term of this county. Some of the things that I think we need to consider, and I probably haven't talked to you guys about these, taxes and fees. Real estate tax, the current tax rate, from my knowing, is 69.5 cents per hundred dollars of assessed value. We're currently under a reassessment. I sincerely doubt that the county grows through reassessment and revaluation of our homes and land. However, as part of the next budget, we need to dedicate some money to EMS. We met the other night with all the EMS agencies in Carroll County. Most of these departments have vehicles that are 20 years old. Some will have low miles, but they need to be upgraded and replaced. Since a new ambulance costs a quarter million dollars and refurbished about $150,000, with 20-some ambulances in the county, if you started a program of one and a half, buy one and refurbish one a year, in about six or seven years, we might catch up. So, one of the things that I think that on the tax ticket, we need to dedicate about a penny and a half of that to EMS service and do hard billing, so that we can recover as much of that cost and provide the service that we hear everybody requesting from us. A couple of other themes on the real estate tax. The Real Estate Tax Relief Act that the board has concerning elderly and handicapped and some others should be reevaluated annually to see that it keeps up with the times, and the elderly and handicap are paying a share that they can afford based off their disability or Medicare payments. The other thing with the land tax that we're doing in Carroll County is the land use ordinance we currently have. We're currently deferring almost $1.5 million of taxes. Ethan, if you'd open those two things right there. I hope it's still here. If you can open it all the way. Currently, what you see in color in Carroll County is peoples that are paying deferred taxes lower than assessed value. Blue, orange, the yellow is county and school-owned property. Just that map should make you realize that land use, most of Carroll County is in land use with deferred taxes. That is a shocking map. Machine and tools tax, I agree with an earlier statement that we ought to look at that and be comparable to our competing counties and make it competitive with businesses. Personal property tax, if you look at our surrounding counties, we're considerably lower on personal property tax than the other counties. And we also need is this, currently, county doesn't have any data centers, large airplanes. I believe that we should put in, since we don't have those taxes, we're not going to get those, we should evaluate our tax rates and the way we do business to make those us more competitive to bring those type of things. Incentive programs for business, industry, and tourism to include retention. The board needs to develop and approve an incentive-based program that allows expanding or relocating businesses in the industry in the county that come to the county or expand to recoup some of their initial costs to retool or expand. This should... This program should be based on a positive cash return and investment to Carroll County into the tax base. Nonprofits, we heard earlier, the board of supervisors should set a grand total amount of county funds to be distributed to all nonprofits. Those nonprofits need to come in and compete on what they're providing to their... Those nonprofits need to come in and compete on what they're providing to their citizens and users of those facilities. This criteria could include the number of county residents served, and these funds would only be eligible to nonprofits fiscally located in Carroll and those supply continuous service to county residents. Tourism and recreation, as we all know, come July the first in the state of Virginia, mixed beverages or mixed drinks are effective any place, any location unless you have zoning. We should look at and be proactive and charge the EDA and others with the development of a map and a return on investment of where these places should locate and make Carroll County successful. The board should also consider amid the large-scale youth and adult events that can play an important part in local business expenses. Currently, we do nothing to bring in tournaments or anything else. A weekend tournament, talk of the town of Christiansburg, could bring in, fill up the motels, and also bring in revenue to the restaurants in the county. Fee structure and recreation tourism needs to be reevaluated, just like everything else in this county, and the fees set so that we can recover the actual cost to implement these programs. Public schools in Carroll County, excuse me, for my past indiscretions where I worked for twenty-some years. First of all, we should schedule an annual meeting to include a facility tours with the school board so that we can go out and look at what the schools are, what they need, and let them make their presentation and case for next fiscal year and fiscal years beyond that. Renovations and upgrades to school systems are never going to stop. Kids wear out buildings. Buildings every twenty to twenty-five, forty years have got to be upgraded, replaced. It's just an ongoing thing. This building is over twenty years old. It's in great shape, but you need to be even looking for the future of this building. School salaries need to be competitive within the region while taking in adjustment for the location that is noted in the Virginia Industrial Act Alliance Report. Also today, I forwarded you guys a copy from John Bassett of a study he has done of the comparative wages of this Galax Carroll County region. It currently, if you use a dollar as the basis in the United States to live, and there's some places like Roanoke pretty close to the dollar, we're less than eighty percent of what it's required based on that cost of living. If you go to Fairfax, it is a buck fifty compared to that. What that means, just to make it simple, if we've got a forty thousand dollar a year salary in the school system here, Fairfax County, and forty-two thousands is the entry-level position in Carroll County schools as a teacher, Fairfax County is fifty-seven thousand, seven-fifty. If you believe in that studies, it's done by two different locations, a forty thousand dollar salary here is higher than the entry-level salary in Fairfax County. Forty thousand equates to sixty thousand. So we need to be comparative and look to where we're at and be competitive. Transportation, a line item needs to be added in the school board budget to buy buses and other items on an annual basis. The board needs to set that. We don't need to be having buses with two-hundred-and-fifty thousand miles transporting kids every place in this county. Administration, while essential to the mission, this needs to be kept at a bare-bones level with funding priorities placed on the students. Debt service, the funding cap should be placed on the school system and that formula, however the board would like, should be based on a formula that includes county value, county median family income, number of students, required local effort, and tax rates to include the adjustment inflation over time so that we can keep that in pace with what the tax structure of the county is. Under schools, the board needs to adopt and work with the school system, negotiate a joint facility use agreement that recreation is the second purpose behind school use for all those facilities out in the county. We can't build because of our lower number of people in this county, but we have gyms in every portion of the county. We have fields. We need to incorporate those fields and things into the event, and we need to negotiate that agreement, and that should be a paramount issue to us as we move forward. County government, we should look at it closely, develop a maximum employment level. Look at every means possible to privatize portions of what we do in this county. Privatization is essential. Privatization, when you pay to have your, the county pays to have a car fixed, purchase gas, whatever, out in our local vendors and people that own businesses puts money back into the county. County government cannot do better than private enterprise. There's just no way that that is available. There's some things that we have to do. We have to take care of the children. We have to take care of those that can't take care of themselves, and we have to take care of the elderly. The rest of us need to pay our fair share and move forward with that. That is how government works, in my opinion. There's these classes of people that need help, and we should do it. The others should help do that also. Regional activities, I would propose that we review every regional activity that we're in to see that it benefits Carroll County. For those that believe in regionalization such as I, I was the instigator of a regional water treatment plant that Carroll's part of when I was in with, regional this, regional that. But, regionalization is good when it maximizes the dollars for the locality. It is not good when the locality, as such as Carroll, shares a larger portion of the cost as we're doing in a lot of regional activities. It's just not good business sense. Public safety, evaluate all the ordinance and funding, ensure the county is not absorbing costs and hidden costs that would not normally be seen by the county. On the public, I have preached to you guys about the jail. I applaud Commonwealth Attorney Mr. Brooks. We are subsidizing over half of the regional jail with state inmate prisoners that the state needs to be paying for. And the only thing that I think I differ with him is, yeah, they give us four bucks, but we give twenty-eight bucks instead of the twenty-four. We don't make up the difference. We give the full amount, so they double-dip on us. Health and welfare, I believe this is one of those issues that sometimes we're so close to that we can't really see the forest or the trees. So at some point, we just need to step back, evaluate, and ask for some professional help on how we can improve and be under cost control. Public service and economic development, Carroll, these both are essential to our future. Water, wastewater, economic development, we all want certain things. The county needs anything from retail to other things, a place to shop. So we need to look at it. We also need to look at the PSA rate structure. I'm not sure everybody agrees with that, but I am positive. In my mind, I've came from forty-some years of being, doing rate structures and things. Water and sewer needs to pay for itself. If there's places that y'all want to invest in for future economic development, so be it. However, water and sewer needs to pay for itself. Economic development, the EDA should be mandated to develop a return on investment structure of how to develop their incentives, not only for businesses but industry and any other thing that they want to delve into in the county. Return on investment is, means that we're wisely paying our tax, giving tax dollars away so that in the future that those tax dollars are doubled and tripled. Lastly, I think lastly, is public loan property. As you can see over there, there's quite a bit of yellow property which the county owns. All the county and EDA property should be evaluated, and those that are deemed appropriate for development for the future and have, could be developed to their maximum potential needs a master plan developed and marketed so that those things can be put back into the tax rolls as they were intended. Overall, the county needs to have a no-holds-barred review of how the county provides services and what type of services. Funds agency develops budgets, how, look how we can better serve those that use our services. Tonight, everybody had an, that wanted to, had an opportunity to speak about the proposal the Carroll Board of Supervisors and Budget Committee had, and I am sure that we will look for it. My statement on budget reductions is look at those departments, try to figure out. But at the end, the department needs to decide where those funds come from, not be dictated down by the board. If those presentations don't meet the board approval, then we dictate down how those cuts to be. But however, every department head, every agency should know their budget and their activities better than we. We're not the experts on everything. It's impossible to do so. So, that is my epistle for the night, and thank you for listening, gentlemen.
Yes, sir, Dr. Burnett. I hadn't planned to speak, but since I do represent probably the largest employer in the county, I feel I need to. You know, we'll do, we'll be good steward of your money, and we won't go out and wastefully spend. I promise you that. But for us to be competitive in any kind of job market, forty thousand dollars a year for a teacher's salary is a good investment for a good teacher. When you, when Ms. Isom talks about the kids that they serve, we serve those same kids. And those kids cost you twice as much as the average investment per child that you If it weren't for social services, if it weren't for the school system, those, what would happen to those children? They're our charge, and I take that charge very seriously, and I take it personal. And I don't want to sacrifice something just for those kids. Again, I hadn't planned on speaking, but I just wanted to, you know, to share where we're coming from as a school system. As far as using facilities, we've always had agreements with the Recreation Department to use our facilities whenever they need. It's an agreement that's still open and still a very good investment for the county to use those facilities. But, you know, I invite you guys, I think Mr. Dotman and I have looked at a date to provide tours of our schools so you can actually see our facility needs that we have. And I'll just be honest with you, our biggest facility need sits right over here at Cal County High School, and that's a safety issue. So, again, we will do our best to be good steward of your money, but don't forget about us. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, is there anybody else? All right, I will close this public hearing again at seven forty-two. Do I have a motion that would close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second, any discussion? I'll close the public hearing at seven forty-two. All right. Next item on the agenda is payment of invoices. Do I have a motion for the payment of invoices?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the payment of the invoices.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
I have a second, any discussion? So I'll take a vote. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, next item is the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a motion about the minutes of the previous meeting?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the previous meeting.
Okay, I have a motion that we approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Do I have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, that gets us to new business. First item on the new business, consent calendar. Do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar?
Make a motion we accept the consent calendar.
Have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second, any discussion? I'll call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Next thing on the new business is set a public hearing for the electronic summons ordinance. And so that, so that you people know what we're talking about, this is the electronic summons systems cost assessment, whereas the Code of Virginia permits court cost to be assessed in criminal, civil, and traffic cases. And whereas the Board of Supervisors of Carroll County, upon the request of the sheriff and the courts, desire to implement a new electronic summons system. And whereas in 2014, the Virginia General Assembly Actions, Virginia Code seventeen-point-one dash two-seven-nine-point-one, provides for localities to charge up to five dollars assessment related to electronic summons systems that permits the additional sum as part of the court cost in each criminal and traffic case in the districts or circuit courts for defendants charged with a violation of any statute or ordinance. And whereas, the new assessment is to be collected by the clerk of the court, clerk of each court and held by the treasurer in a separate internal record. And whereas, the funds are to be distributed, dispersed to the electronic fund summons equipment for the Carroll County law enforcement agencies for the sole purpose of funding software, hardware, and associated equipment caused for the implementation and maintenance of any electronic summons system. And whereas, the Board of Supervisors of Carroll County desire to consider this new ordinance on an electronic summons system assessment to offset the cost of hardware, software, and equipment. So that is the ordinance, and we need to set a public hearing on it.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we set the public hearing at our next meeting. Is that sufficient time?
The first meeting in March or the?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's why I make my motion, yeah.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor that we have this public hearing on the first meeting date in March, which is...
I wonder, looking at your calendars, I would ask that you allow the county attorney to review this, the county administrator.
I think if we advertise for that first meeting in March, that would still be plenty of time to get it advertised.
Okay, March ninth, 2020. Is that agreeable with everybody on the board? Do we need that in form of a motion?
Yeah, I've already made a motion.
Okay, yeah, Rex already made a motion, I'm sorry. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
This, this should save us money. You know, what happens, there's usually at least probably about fifteen to twenty minutes saved if the officer does it in his car, on the traffic stop itself, what I've read, the research I've read. And also, it would really help the court system when it's immediately, or when they come in to turn their computers in, or hook them up, or it can be dubbed from the car, that that summons goes directly to the clerk's office, and they don't have to enter it. What this does is just essentially set a fee now for every summons that's written, and that fee will start to help build funds to help pay for that, for that software. It's not, it's not cheap, and has to do with computers and a whole lot of other things. But it will, over the course of time, it will save county money, in my viewpoint.
Okay, any other discussion? Call for a vote. Call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, next thing on the, under new business is sales tax. I've got down that our treasurer's supposed to be here for that?
I talked to her earlier. I guess I relayed to her that I would speak instead of her.
Oh, okay.
That's okay.
Okay.
I'm not the treasurer, but under tax sales, you have a contract that, in there. And the reason this is up there, I think the code allows her to do this. However, y'all have a contract too with our esteemed attorneys firm. And what we need to understand in the board action, that from this moment forth, all new tax sales will be done by this new firm that has been solicited, and the remaining sales will, that's within Sands Anderson, will be sold by Sands Anderson. So you will have two groups of attorneys for a period of time. But moving forth, they will, Sands Anderson will not get any new sales from the commissioner for properties. That's probably as clear as mine.
Okay, and you're referring to the sale of delinquent properties, right? Properties that's been certified to be sold?
Yes, they're subject to sale. It's my understanding that the treasurer intends to refer properties that have not already been referred out for collection to tax. But the properties where the county's already referred them out to Sands Anderson, we're going to continue to see those properties through to completion, since we've already been working on them.
Okay, so do we have a, we need a motion on that?
I think it's for information, but it was pretty confusing to have two sets of attorneys working. I just wanted on board that y'all did that.
Wanted to clarify, it's actually a contact with the treasurer, so no more supervisor action is necessary.
Okay, all right, and then, next thing is the twice-per-year draft ordinance?
Mr. Durbin, county attorney, is, draft is, ordinance that, for your perusal, and hopefully, we can have our public hearing and have citizens comment in the future about it.
Okay, that all we need to?
I just make a motion, make a motion that we?
This is already for the twenty-fourth, it's been advertised.
Oh, okay. Okay, so this, there will be a public hearing on this ordinance in February twenty-four?
February twenty-four.
Okay. Okay, notice of claim, information. We need to take any action on that?
There's, there's no need for the board to take any action on this, this is really for, just for your information.
Okay.
I believe that if Mr. Dalton hasn't already done anything, he's going to notify the insurance carrier in case a, assume the spot.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, that covers all the new business. Next up is old business, come to committee appointments. It's my understanding that we have four vacancies on the recreational department, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we increase the number of folks on the recreation board to include all the, to include appointment of all the folks that have applied, and, which I think all the folks that, that their term expired.
Mm-hmm.
As, reappoint those folks, and to include two others.
One, one of the other?
No, Mr. Collins.
No, he's on there already. Larry's on there. Oh, yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
There's two. To include Mr. Collins and Mr. Austin.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor that, under this committee appointments, the four that's on there now, that expired December thirty-first, twenty nineteen, they've all reapplied, and you would like to increase the number on the board to include the two new people that, that applied for it?
Yes, that's correct.
For review purposes?
Yes.
Can those two extra people be at large? Those are done by districts.
That works for me. That would be my motion.
Can you tell us who the other four are?
The four that, the four that's on there now, that, that their term expired, and they all expressed concerns to stay on it, is Alvin Davidson, Marion Harris, Ronnie Mankins, and Howard Mayo.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Adam Joyce is on it too.
Yeah, he was appointed last week.
Yes, he was appointed.
Okay, okay, that's right, and Adam Joyce. And then?
Chris Goode also, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. He was too.
Okay, Chris Goode.
He was appointed previously too.
Okay, and then the two new ones we have is Larry Collins, and who's the other?
Travis Austin.
Who?
Travis Austin is what the application says.
Travis Austin. Okay. Yeah, okay, Larry Collins and Travis Austin. Okay, with that all being said, do I have a motion that we do what Mr. Hill has explained to us he'd like to do?
I so move.
Okay, have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? No discussion, I'll call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Next item is a motion to accept NRRWA financial report.
Make a motion we accept the New River Regional Water Authority's financial report.
Okay, that does stand for the New River Regional Water Authority, okay. Thank you, Mr. McCraw. All right.
I second.
Have a motion and a second to accept their financial report, any discussion? I'll, I'll call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay. Have a motion, or I need a motion to accept the Solid Waste Authority's financial report. Solid Waste Authority's financial report, do I have a motion to accept it?
I make a motion we accept the Solid Waste Authority financial report.
Have a motion to accept, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Okay, next item is the solid waste franchise agreement. Anybody here to speak on that tonight? Okay, sir.
Mr. Chairman, we have bids on Friday, based off our franchise agreement, we only received one proposal from GFL, who is your current provider, and they have made a proposal, I would request from the Board of Supervisors' approval to finalize and negotiate a contract, and the motion containing that these prices may go down instead of upward, and have the county attorney draft the franchise agreement or contract with these people, and we will bring it forth at the next Board of Supervisors' meeting.
Okay, so I need to entertain a motion to accept negotiations with GFL for a new contract?
If you would refer that to the Finance Committee, and we will do that, I think at this point, Pat?
Okay, all right, can I entertain a motion that we refer that to the Financial Committee to negotiate with GFL on their proposal?
I so move.
Okay, have a motion, do I have a second?
A second.
Have a second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes on that. Okay, that's, that's all under old business.
Still got other.
Do what?
We got other, I'll make a couple motions.
Do I have other?
That must be in the whole one.
He said he'd make it, do it when he's about.
Just skip one, just say it.
Okay, thank you. I thought I was missing something here. Okay, next, next item on the agenda is board member comments. And they've got us in order here the way we're sitting, no?
They don't.
Okay. So, it looks like I'm supposed to speak first, and I guess, I don't know why, but I, I'll take that, great opportunity. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out. This is what government's all about. We need to hear from the people, and we need to listen to the people, both good and bad. I hope, I hope you all understand, and have got a good understanding about what we're against, what we're up against. I heard both, both ways, you know? Nobody wants their budget cut, and I understand that. And nobody wants to lose any services, but I also understand they don't want to pay any more for it either. So it's a big catch-22, it's a huge catch-22. One of the things, and the gentleman that kindly was fussing at us because we came up with this budget shortage, and yes, it's our fault. It is, I'll be the first one to say it's our fault. We entrusted the people that worked under us to present us a balanced budget. If you've ever looked at the budget of this county, it's about that thick. And it's coded, and it's this, and the first half of it is revenue, and the back half of it is expenditures, and the back page says, "You got it, spend it." And we voted for it. We'd had no idea that it was short on the revenue side, or I didn't. I'm not going to speak for these guys, I did not, until we had a change of people that worked for the county, and, and our interim county administrator found it. I'll take the blame for it. That's all I can do, I am on the board. But it also, it also brings, who do I trust? When the next one comes out, do I sit here and go, "Yeah," or do I sit here and find the people to explain page by page by page, thing by thing by thing, saying, "This is a balanced budget." I don't know, jury's still out on that one. I'll say it was never done intentionally, never. That's a state law that we're mandated to. And to say that we passed an unbalanced budget knowingly, no, we didn't, I didn't. That's all I want to say about that. That's all I want to say about that. One of the things, and I know Ms. Mills and I have been talking about the rescue situation down in, in the law for my district, yes, we are moving very forward on that. The suggestions that you all gave me, that I brought to the county and administrator, and he's taken them to the boards, are very favorable. And hopefully, very soon. We are working, I promise you that. And that's all I'm going to say about that. Tough job. Never had a clue when I signed my name on that to run supervisor that all this would be going on, but, anyway, with that being said, again, thank you all coming, please, please, talk to us, talk to us. I know you think you're talking, beating a dead horse, that we're going to keep doing what we've been doing, but I looked up Albert Einstein's definition of insanity. If you don't change nothing, nothing will change. So we've got to change things, we've got to get this thing back going. You've probably heard me say that month after month after month, but I promise you, we are trying, we are trying. That's all I got to say, thank you. We'll just go around this way. Go ahead.
I'd like to thank each one of you for taking time to come out tonight, and the ones that took time to watch us on the YouTube or whatever we're on there. And I ask for you to please sympathize with us in trying to fix what we into. It's not easy for us, not going to be easy for a lot of others, and it's got to be done, we just got to try to get on track. And I will say that this board, the other week, we done our part. We voted to cut our salary in half, so we done our part. When you look at how big a salary we get, you think about how much we kept there. But we did, we having two meetings a month for the same money was one a month. So, we, we're working along with you, and please bear with us, help us all you can, and pray for us that we'll do the right thing. Thank you.
All right, I'm going to try to answer, answer a couple questions, one of them, our debt, it's the best amount of knowledge, it's paid, paid off, the oldest first. So if somebody owes it back so far, when they come in to make payments, those are paid first. Delinquent taxes, yeah, let me qualify that. So that's how that, that's worked. Also, there was, each month, there's delinquent taxes coming in. It takes about eighteen months once you start the process. Mr. Durbin, correct me, but that's about what it takes once you start the process to put a piece of property in to collect ta, delinquent taxes. And they get an opportunity to, to sign an agreement to go ahead and make monthly payments, and that's another way they do it. Another thing, there was a question about Gordon left, I wish he hadn't. We are not paying any extra debt, we may be refinancing, we're not paying extra payments on our debt, we're paying what's due. Over four million in the school system, and what, what included in here is our PSA and EDA debt. So, there's, and right now, we're at ten point, at ten percent, over ten to a hundred percent debt as percentage of operating and debt service. We should be at five, that's what he said. Now, if you go back, we had over a hundred million in debt at one time. We're down to in the forties. So we, we've done a pretty good job, but we still have a long ways to go. And there's one other thing, we, anytime we talked about business, business is done by the EDA, the Board of Supervisors, we can't help a business specifically, that has to be done by the, the EDA. And from this day forward, I want to make sure that we get a return on our, our investment. So we put money out there, we expect an even return on that investment. And I'm going to push whatever I can to make sure that that happens. And thank everyone for, for coming, listening to all this stuff we have. I do want to thank everyone for being here. It's, it's been a true learning experience. I think back to, I used to sit back there and be in the same boat you all.
I, I think back to, I used to sit back there and be in the same boat you all are in and wonder what in the world this group's doing, but thi- this group has made a commitment just this past year to, to, to try to fix the things that needs to be fixed. And it's like Joe said, we put our trust somewhere we probably shouldn't put our trust. And are we going to be more attentive? I'm going to be more attentive than asking a lot more questions than what I used to ask. And it's because, shame on me, you know, once it's my fault, twice it's not. I mean, once it cannot be my fault sometimes, but twice it is definitely my fault. It's not going to happen again. And, um, Saleil has brought a lot of things to our attention. I don't think people can realize what he has brought to our attention. And there's a lot, been lots of things done in the past that needs to be corrected, and needs to be looked at, and needs to be repaired. And we're gradually making that, that push forward. I won't, I know that, uh, Mr. Berryer done left, but I want to thank him for what he's doing down at Landsburg Community Center. He's doing, they're doing a lot down there, folks. If you're not ever down there, they do Rook tournaments on Friday nights, and they have little bands on Friday nights, and they do a lot for the community down there, and it's, it's interesting to go. They'll have covered dish meals, and it's, it's a lot of fun. They're doing, they're working hard to keep it going. And for what they do, I think he needs to have some, some praise, him and that group does for what they do do for the community. And I guess that's about it.
Well, after all them, I guess we'll come down here, and what a point, talking point do I have? But I want to thank everybody for coming out and speaking. It's good to hear from Roger and taking his job 100% serious and hopefully can help us save a lot of money in the county. I know he run on that, and I enjoyed time spent with him. And Larry and some of the people from the direct department that's going to take a stand and help us, me and Roger's talked many times about having softball, baseball tournaments in the community and, and around. I drove my kid from Washington DC to Chattanooga play ball, you know, so it's good to hear them testament, you know, people we're interested in seeing that help our revenue for our community and all, and, you know, it's good to see a, a lot of the farmers here that are taking care of our community and making it look nice all the time, and it's good to see EMS and Mr. Slate and everybody here tonight. It's, um, it's an honor and a privilege. You know, it's sort of like Joe said, going through all this stuff, you know, I've been going through the PSA budget and the county budget, you know, I'm sitting on both boards and just trying to, you know, I was dwelling 30 minutes on a $9.50 power bill today, you know, of a, of a way of wondering how we're paying that, but, you know, I'll, yeah, I look at it like if I signed up for the job, I'm going to dig into the $9, just the same as the $5,000 ones, you know, and I'm thankful for the other board members, you know, I've asked Robbie some questions today that I was concerned with before the PSA meeting, and Philip and Joe and Rex, and, you know, they probably think I'm looking way in too much in it, but, you know, if I signed up for this job, I'm going to give it 100% for, for the community. And Ms. Mills, it's good to see you again, and, you know, Joe's working really hard for Law 4, just like I am for Duxbury, you know. We feel like we're a little left out, but, you know, there's a lot of other communities in the county that feel the same way, so we'll have to do what's in just and right for everybody, so thank y'all, and see you in two weeks.
Joe, one thing I forgot to mention, I had a note to do it and looked over it. I took too many pages of notes. I'd like to personally thank Benny Gessenberry for his efforts in Richmond last week. From what I understood, he, he, he spent a lot of time sitting in a waiting, but I do, I do appreciate it for what you're standing up to do there, Benny. Thank you.
Yes, and, and for y'all, y'all that don't know, uh, Mr. Gessenberry and somebody else went to Richmond to take a stand against a bill that's going through General Assembly right now, and it's, if it passes, it's going to really hurt farmers. And, uh, they took the initiative to go up and, and sit in a, I don't know if it was a delegate or a state senator's office for eight hours to get to talk to him about it, so, uh, yeah, we do have people that care, and we appreciate you doing that for everybody that's in this county. Okay, any other comments from the board? Okay, next thing on the agenda is the county administrator's comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I've had plenty to say tonight, which is sort of unusual. A couple of things, uh, that I need from you guys tonight. Mr. Smith talked about it earlier. I need approval to hire some people for recreation. I also want to make a recommendation to the board that we combine the department head, the recreation tourism into one, and have that authority to advertise and hire those positions that have left. And after you get that, I've got one more item, if somebody would be so kind to authorize that.
Okay, a motion, we authorize, uh, the tourism director to be also the recreation director and hire those other two, other positions, other positions.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
The other two are part-time.
Yeah.
Okay. Any more discussion? All right, I'll call for a vote on Mr. Hill's motion. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw? And I'll vote yes on that. All right, sir?
Uh, second item, I have an invoice from the town of Hillsville for the county's half of fireworks, which is not budgeted in this year's budget. I would ask that y'all amend and appropriate if y'all deem that y'all want to pay half of the fireworks for Carroll County at the VFW of $9,582.
Wow.
Mr. Chairman, did they request this money before they had the fireworks show or afterwards?
I will try to answer that. I thought it was in the budget beforehand, and, but I was not able to find it. My understanding is they use a contingency fund to pay for that, which we eliminated last year at the end of the budget. I mean, during the budget process, there was several contingency funds that they had that we eliminated. It should have been in there specific, but I couldn't find it. I went back and looked, so... But it's a, it's a joint thing that we've been doing with the, with the town of Hillsville for how many years? How long?
Many.
It's been, yeah, ever since I can remember.
Is that about when my dad started?
Well, I'll make a motion that we appropriate that $9,582 for that purpose.
Excuse me, Mr., is that a one-time deal, or is this from you to now on?
It'll have, that'll have to be up to the next budget year, I guess.
Roger, the board can approve anything but one-year budgets, so every year they have to evaluate every request that comes forward. But historically, it's been many years.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second that we pay this. Any discussion?
I'm assuming, I don't, no one's, unless Leanne, if you could speak to it, whether or not they've already contracted for those folks, usually it's an early thing, you have to get in and contract it. So I don't know whether that's already done or not, so they would be stuck if it's already in the works. She's shaking her head, yes.
Typically, and we have, we, we shared it with the town of Hillsville, and that's usually eight months ahead, so they can get scheduled.
So that comes up the 4th of July, so we're, we may have already done it, I don't know. Hillsville handles it. I think they also do a band at the same time, you know, there's a lot of other activities that day, the 4th of July parade, the VFW event is down there, you know, it's, it's not just fireworks. And that's all I got to say.
I'd like to intervene on this, guys. I love that fireworks show as good as everybody, but we're cutting budgets. Do we have $9,500 to watch 40 minutes of fireworks? And then again, and, and I'm going to talk about the town. We're in a reassessment year. The town uses the assessment values that our company that we hired to do their taxation. We asked them to pay part of that cost on the property in the town limits, and they refused. They said, "No, the county can pay all of it." So I've got some hard feelings when they wouldn't bend over to help us with what it cost us, and it's going to cost us over $750,000 to do this reappraisal. And they wouldn't bend over and, and, and cross the line and help us with the prop, with numbers that they're going to use to set their taxes. It, it's hard for me to go, "Hey, here's $9,500 on 40 minutes worth of fireworks." That's all I've got to say about it.
Well, let's not blame them. Somebody told them that they could do it. They just didn't go out there and send us the $9,500. Somebody here knew it was going to happen.
Well, I didn't.
I didn't need you, but that's why they want to get to pay it.
I, I think, I think we need to table this for a little while and go sit down and talk to the town. I think we need, I don't think we need to act on it tonight. That's, that's my opinion, but, uh...
Mr. Chairman?
I can withdraw my second.
And I'll, I will make a motion to table, table this till the next meeting.
Okay. I have a, uh, motion to table this till the next month, till we can sit down and talk with the town about this. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's second, any discussion? Call for a vote, Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes on the table. Yes. Thank you, guys. Anything else, Mr. County Administrator?
That's all, sir?
Okay. Next thing is informational package?
All right, hang on. Okay, do we, uh...
I'm sorry.
Do we need a, a motion to approve the budget adjustment? We need, do we need, need to make that motion for the budget adjustments that's approved by the Finance Committee?
Mr. Chairman, I would recommend that we send these budget adjustment requests out, and let a, let each department respond to those, and at the February 24th meeting, either accept those or make them yourself. But I would recommend that any department that you're cutting have the opportunity to, to look at those and make them, um, adjustments, and then bring them back to the board on the 24th.
Okay. I have a motion to send notice to all the departments where the Finance Committee has recommended cuts, and give them until February 24th to respond back, or they can come back to the 24th meeting and respond to us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Anybody want to make that in the form of a motion?
I so move.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Uh, a motion and a second, any discussion? Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
Mr. Hill?
Yes.
Mr. McCraw?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes. Anything else, gentlemen? Anything else? Not hearing any other business coming before the board, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we adjourn?
I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I second.
I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.